It's official.
At this time, I'll call the meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. We have one addition that I know of on the agenda, and that will be a brief presentation by Dave Schelkoff, general manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities. And if it's okay with the council, we'll add that as the first item of new business. Is there any other additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? We'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the minutes from the work session as well as the minutes from the regular meeting. Both were held on October 12th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve.
John, seconded by Don, or by Craig, to approve the minutes as they have been presented, we'll move to a vote.
Okay, John, why can't I vote here? You find it, you know, stressed? It just be, oh, here. Nope, nope, that's not it.
And I assume the votes are all in. So we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. Apologize for the delay there. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda I of number two. Consider the award of bids for rock salt for the street department. I'll call on Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So we received proposals for 250 ton of rock salt for the street department on October 19th. We did receive four bids, and you've got the tabulation attached. The low bid was received from Mills and Miller, Inc. of Brandon, South Dakota, in the amount of $81.50 per ton for a total of $20,375. Our 2021 street department budget did include $45,000 for the purchase of winter road salts. This is about half the amount that we may have ordered if we needed our normal quantity. Due to nice winter, we needed a little less quantity. So staff would recommend that we award to Mills and Miller for $81.50 per ton.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions on this bid? If not, is there a motion?
I approve the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the award for other bids for rock salt for the street department. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include consider the request of Prairie Home Hospice and Community Care for the Light Up Tonight Parade. That will be held November 16th, 2021. Consider the resolution for a special assessment deferral for hardship. Consider the resolution authorizing the creation of the Internal Fund 701 and transfer funds from Capital Fund 401 to the Internal Service Fund 701. Consider the application for exempt permit for shades of the past. Consider authorization to advertise for bids for towing and storage of vehicles, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So move.
By Craig, seconded by Don to approve the items on the consent agenda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the item that was added to the agenda. This is a a presentation by Marshall Municipal Utilities. And doing that presentation will be Dave Schelkoff, general manager. Dave?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the time to talk a little bit about what's going on at MMU. At the last utility commission meeting, action was taken towards a project at Independence Park. I would like to back up just a little bit and tell you why we're at this position and why I'm at this podium talking to you tonight. It's because of the leadership of this council and your move towards the upgrade and the sprucing up, if you will, of the Independence Park, getting ready for the 150th anniversary for Marshall, Minnesota. It's an amazing thing, and we're all getting pretty excited about celebrating that together here next year. But with that commitment from this city council, the utility commission has decided to come alongside and provide support for that initiative that you guys have approved over the last few months. And that is to, along with the new walk paths that are being installed and the work that's being done in the fourth pound there, we're going to be installing lighting. MMU will come alongside and pay for the lighting installation and working with Preston on what that will look like and how that will, and all of the little details that will come with that to make sure that the new walking paths are safe and secure and operational even in the middle of the night for that Independence Park. So we appreciate the leadership of the city council and the city. The utility commission just wants to come alongside and help the city get ready for the 150th anniversary. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dave. John, as liaison to the utilities commission, anything you want to add?
I just have the addition in there that it's expected that the lights would be able to be controlled for things like the, what we just talked about earlier, the light up the night when those paths are going, and there's a lot of lights out there. Preston should have the ability to dim down the lights and still get the impressive view of the Christmas tree lights that are out there and provide some lighting on the path that the walkers or whatever can make use of. So it's a nice feature. A lot of thought has gone into it by the utility and what they're doing, and just say thank you for making that addition to our parks. Say this is one of our best used parks, I think, and that's going to be a great addition.
Thank you, John. Any other comments that the city council has? I would just say, on behalf of the city, Dave, the thank you, and we continue as a community to enjoy the partnership between Municipal Utilities and the city of Marshall, and this project is is one more example of that. The, you know, Independence Park was started in roughly 1988, and since that time, it's really evolved, not just as a city park, but a park where events happen and really more of a regional park. So this is just one more step in making that a safe environment, making that a pleasant environment, and a park that not only the community, but the region will enjoy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I have to tell you, I'm a recent convert to Marshall, Minnesota, and that is a beautiful park. It's a great asset to this community. My wife and I comment about it all the time. We use it. We walk on it. So it is great. The one thing I do want to add to that is every one of these poles we put in for the lighting will have an outlet on it as well. So when you start lighting up the night and getting ready for the holidays, you will be able to go throughout that walking path and plug something in, and I see great things in the future there. So thank you very much for your time.
One question. Are you, are these going to be more like elevated, like the post lamps, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, it'll be a combination of ballards, walking ballards, but also they'll have some street light type of lamps that we see in our residential areas. Again, each light will be controlled by a photo eye that will have Wi-Fi capability of control. And that's what the mayor was talking about, that Preston or his team will be able to take that, pull the app up, and then turn on the lights or put them to 30% or 50%. It's an amazing feature that we can do today.
Good. Thank you.
And the fact that all the, being able to plug in things that way eliminate, you know, when Prairie Home Hospice, there's a tremendous amount of extension cords and
Yes.
wires that are out there, so that'll make
Should help a lot.
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move back to the agenda then, and Agenda item number nine. Consider the request for a conditional use permit presenting this will be Ilya Gudman.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request by the school for creating a career and technical education center at 900 North 59. What that thing is, is usually classes, they have classes which related to construction and automotive mostly. And you have in your packet the letter from the superintendent which describes it in more details. This building is located in I-2 General Business, General Industrial District, and that district allows industrial training schools as a permitted use. This one is not exactly the same, but it is close. And the, one of the things that ordinance allows is a conditional use is the users similar to permitted use. And the staff decided that this use is close enough to be considered under the provision of the ordinance as a similar to industrial training school. We have some conditions here, and basically they are to make sure that it, the building is safe and parking is taken care of, and that's why it's limited to a number of people there. Parking requires parking, requires that the building meets the building code. And I believe the city representative is here to answer additional questions if there are any.
Okay. And you would like to present too?
Well, I'm just here on behalf of the school district.
We'll have you come up to the
Good evening. I'm Amanda Peterson. I am an assistant principal at May Tech, the Alternative School in Marshall, where we currently house our welding and our CNA, CTE programs. I'm here tonight just in case you guys had any questions and if you wanted to know more about our plan moving forward with our new career and technical education center. As Ilya explained, we would use a conditional use for this property so that we could house some of our career and technical education programs. Our first phase would move our welding program out there. And then, as Ilya explained, we would include automotive and then the construction trades. We're really trying to partnership with our community. We have needs in a lot of these areas, and so we want to start to offer more opportunities for our students to be trained at the high school level, to prepare them to go out to the workforce or to experience some of those programs and then make decisions if they want to go on to those further. So that's the whole idea behind our career and technical education programming.
Thank you for that, that information. Now, the there may be some questions about the general program afterwards, but first let's deal with the conditional use permit. This was considered by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended its approval. Are there any comments? Additional comments from the Planning Commission?
No, there were none. They were wholeheartedly in favor of the
Okay.
I have a question. Number five. What is the purpose of limiting to 60 students and a quarter of them no more? A quarter of them are involved in CNA, of course. Why are we limiting students? And why are we limiting, CNA is certified nursing, so why are we limiting CNA's when that's something we really, really, really need?
Okay, so the number, this number is based on what the school requested. And the limitation of the number of CNA student is because if you look at what feels kind of close to that industrial training school, CNA is the only one which really is not. Because everything else, automotive, construction, is can be considered industrial thing. But CNA, again, in staff's opinion, is not. That's why we are limiting to 25%, which the ordinance allows to kind of basically, to a degree, ignore if the use is not listed, if it's less than 25% of the use. So that's why it's limitation, 25% of the maximum number of students.
But we could increase that as a, because to me, it doesn't make sense to limit to 15 students.
You can, I mean, obviously, you can change the condition.
Or completely remove that condition.
You can. I mean, it's just the
Because I would be, I'd be in the favor of completely removing that condition, because CNA leads the nurses, and nurses is short right now.
Part of that, too, comes from the structure of the class. They like to have those class sizes around 15 so that they can do a lot more of the hands-on component. We also partnership with Minnesota West right now, and that's part of the programming requirements is they like to keep them at about 15. And so how those classes are run, we would still be able to allow for students to be in all of the industrial tech components of welding, automotive, and a CNA class out there.
So you can tie your hands from
Yep.
To me, it's a condition that ties your hands, but I think you guys can handle that, those numbers yourself. Now, we as a city, I don't think need to put that condition on.
Yeah, I think what Jim is suggesting is the, we can remove that, that condition. You can design your curriculum and your class size
Yeah.
you want.
Correct.
I think that's just where the initial number came from, was that's what we currently offer, so.
I would be, I would be in favor of removing, let you guys deal with it yourself. The city doesn't need to dictate that. Craig?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Kind of on the same lines, is the 60 number as the maximum total students? Is that just because of the square footage available in the existing buildings?
It is tied to that somehow, but again, as I said, that number came from the school.
Right.
That's why we talked to them about this condition, and they said that there's no problem with that condition. So I remember that this thing stays with the property.
Property, right.
It's forever.
No, I get that. I mean, I just, my thought on this is because, you know, potentially, hopefully, we'll see this continue to grow, and they might need to put additional building up or do other things, and then I don't want them to have to come in and tie in some more. So I, too, am a little bit concerned about putting a head cap on and just say that you'll manage it in accordance with proper spacing and and safe standards, you know, so a safe workplace with separation when it needs to be because of whatever the training function of its machining or whatever. Because I really hope this grows. This should have never been killed 25, 30, 40 years ago. It's really sad we gave up our vocations.
Any other questions about the recommendation? If not, I'm open to a motion on the conditional use permit.
I want to make the motion to approve with the removal of condition number five.
I'll second it.
By Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Ilya.
Thank you.
Any other questions then about the program or any just general comments?
Are you going to be running tomorrow or the next day?
I wish. Our plan is to, hopefully this fall, have our welding program completely running out there. And then there's a little bit of construction components that need to take place in order for us to ensure we have all of the proper equipment and stuff for our CNA class, our automotive class, and then we'll get the construction trades in. We've been working with our teachers, though, on how that's going to look. We are visiting a couple other schools to get some ideas. We want to have partnerships with our local businessmen and women just to make sure that we are getting the needs for our area, so.
Very good.
And like See this happen.
Well, like Craig said, as somebody who owns a business that works in the trade construction, we need this a long time ago. This needs to grow. This is good.
This came from a kid, too, that went through those programs before they got killed and then spent some time on school board trying to keep her from getting killed, and unfortunately was unsuccessful, and I'm glad to see it revived.
We're very excited for it to come back, too, yes.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda item number 10. Consider the approval of the 2022 health insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So beginning this presentation will be Sheila Dubs, RHR Director for City of Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Two weeks ago, when we met in a work session, Bill Chakuski, our broker for health and dental insurances, was here to talk about our renewals. Both of our, both our health and our dental agreements do expire this year on December 31st. Bill is unable to be here today, but in his place, I will introduce Mari Wagner. She is the account manager for our account through National Insurance Services and is here to provide a brief summary of the information that was presented at the work session and then to answer any questions that you might have about the renewals. As soon as Mari's overview is complete, then I'll come back and I will review the cost share options with the council for the health insurance.
So welcome, Mari.
Thank you. My name is Mari Wagner, and I work for National Insurance Services. I work with Bill Chakuski, who wasn't able to be here tonight. But yeah, just to give you kind of a brief overview of the renewal, you guys did make a good decision a couple years ago for cost savings on moving to PEAP or the Public Employees Insurance Plan. And since then, obviously, for reasons kind of like COVID and obviously rising costs and things like that, there's also different things that have kind of shaken up the market. We have UHC coming into the market. We have the co-ops within the Minnesota Healthcare Consortium have moved to Medica as their administrator. And then we also have United Healthcare purchasing Preferred One, which also then is the administrator for Prime Health. And so with those things has shaken up the market a lot, and with your guys' renewal, with PEAP being at 9%, we did shop the market in anticipation of this with coming off of the school groups. We did have quite a few come in at a lot lower rates for you guys. And the, another nice thing on that is Blue Cross is the carrier that had come in the cheapest for you guys compared to that PEAP renewal. And another great option for that is it does give them, the employees, the aware network, which gives them the opportunity to, you know, maybe go to Avera one day or Sandford the next or Caris the next. It's not a referral program. They don't have to go through, going through that referral in order to be seen by the doctors or providers. The other nice thing is that it does require a two-year commitment because it does give a second year rate cap. Are there any other, any questions regarding the information that Bill presented or anything that I can review with you guys?
Thank you, Mari. Any questions on the recommendation before we turn it back to Sheila?
I just, like we said to Bill before, I really appreciate the work that went into this to shop it out, and it's, looks like a pretty good offer to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mari.
So staff had hoped that the PEAP insurance plan would provide for long-term rate stability, but unfortunately with COVID and other factors, that didn't occur for our renewal in 2022. We did have rate stability for two years, but based on the proposals received, we no longer have that with PEAP. As Mari just reviewed, they were proactive on our behalf and went out for requests for proposals from other carriers. And truly thankful for them for doing that. As they showed up on the screen right now, the city has several good options, not only to reduce costs, but also to maintain affordable premiums and deductibles for employees. Each of the plans listed on this summary sheet does represent a high deductible healthcare plan. Right now, that is the most affordable type of plan for the city. The Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that is highlighted offers the largest savings to the city, a 12% reduction in total premium costs and a rate cap next year of 11%. That's wonderful news, and again, thanks, thanks to Bill and Mari for their hard work in gathering all of that information and summarizing it for us. As you all are aware, health insurance is the foundation of an employee benefit package, and maintaining a competitive benefit package is one of the tools that we have to retain and attract quality employees. There is strong competition right now for skilled employees in and around Marshall. And the competition for talent isn't just occurring for people that may be actively searching for something new or higher wages or better benefits. We're also seeing employees who are happy in their positions, who aren't applying for other jobs, being actively recruited to new opportunities. As I mentioned at the work session two weeks ago, between now and the end of this year, we are recruiting four new employees due to retirements and resignations. We also anticipate additional retirements in 2022. So maintaining, maintaining a competitive benefit package is one of the best tools we have to attract quality candidates. Right now, the cost share between the city and employees is in a good place. For single and family health insurances, Marshall is ranked right in the middle of our comparables. We rank seventh out of 12, with six cities contributing less and six contributing more on our single plans, and we rank fifth on our family plans. Five cities contribute less and seven cities contribute more. So we are in a good position on that. In your background materials, I've provided three cost share options for your consideration, with the costs also broken out by fund on the following page. Staff are proposing that the council not renew with PEAP this year and instead approve a two-year agreement with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Option A, highlighted in green, reflects a cost share plan that is consistent with approval decisions that the council has made for the prior six years, sharing the savings in premium across both the city and the employee. The option B, which is in orange, starts with the premium rates in option A and then increases the employee premium by another 1%. Option C provides the city with the full savings realized by the reduced premium by maintaining the same employee monthly rates as we have now. At this point, I think I'll turn it back to the council. Mari and I would be happy to answer any questions you have either about the renewal itself or the options on the screen.
Okay, thank you. And as we begin the discussion, I want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that both staff as well as the agency has done in bringing us to this point, bringing us a good renewal option as well as presenting some options on that renewal option. So with that, I'll open up for just any general questions or discussion. Or would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept option B.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Now, discussion on that, on that, on the motion.
And, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I recommend option B, and again, I thank Sheila and the rest of the staff for going through this and Bill and Mari. But this doesn't come around very often that we see a 12% decrease in our insurance premiums. So I think we're taking advantage of that, plus we're asking the employees to pay 1% more. Keep in mind also that we're going to be faced with a comparable worth study sometime in the next year or two years. So those things all have to be taken into consideration. So I think asking the employees to pay 1% more, I don't think is out of line. In fact, I think, I'm not going to put Sharon on the line here, but I think that was something that Sharon probably suggested to us in our last meeting that we take a look at that, because we will not have this opportunity probably in the near future. So that's my reason for recommending option B.
Sharon, you have a comment?
I want to mention that even though there is a slight increase in the cost
I want to mention that even though there is a slight increase in the cost share amount to employees, because of the reduction in the premiums as a whole for the city, they actually will see a reduction.
Right.
In the amount of premium they pay in 2022. So it is kind of a nice opportunity to make a change and not, it still benefits employees.
Right.
Right. And I think that's, I agree. I think it's a, it's fair. I know we've got some potential of getting whip side. We've got a, I like the cap. I like the way the cap on the Blue Cross comparative comes, the worst-case scenario, we end up with a 1% insurance increase over the two years where the others would be 8 or 9%. And so, I mean, I think it's equitable, and again, I think that it's also appropriate looking, knowing that with the comparable worth study, we're probably going to be looking at some other additional increases. So I think option B or alternative B is very fair.
Any other discussion on the motion?
And Mr. Mayor, just one point that maybe our listening public and viewing public should be aware, this will save the city $192,000. I think they need to know that. I mean, it's still, it's still a significant amount of savings to the city if we accept option B.
And as Sharon pointed out, also to the employees, too.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Consider the Approval of a Two-Year Renewal with Delta Dental for dental insurance for the years 2022, 2023. Once again, Sheila.
Thank you. I included the Delta Dental Renewal Letter and information in your background materials as shown on the renewal. The city needed a 14.9% increase, but Bill Chakuski, our broker, was able to negotiate this down to a 4% increase with a two-year rate guarantee. I've provided two cost-share options for 2022 for the council to consider, along with the cost by fund, again, on the last page of your materials. I didn't include this component in the recommendation, but since this is a two-year agreement, if the council wishes to include both years 2022 and '23 in the motion on a cost-share option, you could certainly do that as we won't have a premium increase next year. Again, I did not put that in the recommendation, but that is something that the council could do if you wish. If the council has any questions about this renewal for Mari or myself, I would invite Mari back to the podium, but if not, I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. Once again, thank you for your work here. Unlike health insurance, dental insurance is a much smaller budget item, yet it is a budget, budget item, too. So questions or discussion from the council?
Okay. So I'd make a motion to approve the Delta Dental Program using recommendation option A.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I think the alternative option B is a better savings for the city and yet, and also the employee.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass.
If I could ask a clarifying point, is that for 2022 or 2022 and 2023?
Well, it's a little late after we've talked.
2022.
That's right. I assume it was for 2022, but, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll move then to the next agenda item, which would be Consider the Renewal to Lease Agreement with Enterprise Leasing Company, location at Southwest Minnesota Regional Airport. Sharon?
Yes. Jason and I, along with some staff, have been working with Enterprise for probably over a year now. COVID did do some delays, and they've had some staffing changes as well. They have also discussed, in the age of COVID, just sanitation of their vehicles and so forth, and in addition, their economic pressures. We all know that business travel is not what it used to be. We know it's coming back a little bit, but it is not what it used to be. So this was a longer-term negotiation on renewing this contract, and for the finer details, I'm going to have Jason comment on it. He, I actually lost a little patience towards the end, and I had Jason finish it because it just took so long for them to kind of come around. But we do have an agreement for consideration, and I'll turn it over to Jason to expound further.
Thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Sure. Thanks, Sharon. I think that most of the changes in the lease agreement are just refining and correcting the past one to better reflect how they utilize the property out there, identifying where they're actually permitted to use parking stalls, making sure that they have a wash base space, as Sharon identified, for detailing the vehicles after use, washing them year round, those sorts of things. There's also a cost share in making that wash bay meet company policy. So, street department staff and airport staff would do some work out there in the wash bay to make it compliant with enterprise standards, and Enterprise would pay some funds towards making that happen, and that's included in the agreement as well. As Sharon indicated, the, the rent is pretty similar to what it was out there for the first three years, and then it, the back end, the last two years go up $25 per month. So it took a long time, but we're finally here, and we have an agreement that I think both sides from, on a staff level at least, agree to. So we could entertain any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Jason. I would just comment, you know, the having Enterprise located at the airport is, is a benefit to the airport, and it's also a benefit to the region because, you know, this is an option that would not be available in the region but for their location here in Marshall. Questions?
Jason, I have a question, and you said Enterprise will pay for the materials and estimated to be $1,500. You look in the list on page 77, can all of that work be done for $1,500? I mean, that's extensive.
Yeah.
I know, I know the city staff is probably going to do labor, but just the raw materials, it just seems, $1,500 seems like a, one heck of a, a good deal.
I agree with you. It does seem low, but, you know, city staff, some staff people did go out and get some quotes, and this is what they have for material costs. There's zero labor built into that. That'll be all city labor, but that is the cost that, that we, that we have, so.
So the epoxy floor, the city would do that themselves instead of hiring it out and things like that?
Correct.
Wow. Jim, does that seem reasonable to you? I mean, all of this.
It's a small space as well.
On that list?
It's not horrible.
Okay. It just seemed a little low to me, that's all. What, if it exceeds that, would, is Enterprise willing to pay, I mean, say it's $2,000?
We're proposing to cap Enterprise at $1,500. They indicated a pretty tight market for them, and Marshall being a tough market for them to make it, and then they were pretty adamant about that.
We had a pretty good discussion through it, the airport commission, and I know that it, it has full support and, and hope that it maintains the, in fact, and the other thing is, is prior use of the office space that they have was a storage closet, so it's pretty economical.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes.
Councilmember Lizinski, never mind.
Pardon me? Okay. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 13. This is the Legion Field Stormwater Improvement Project. We have a change order, the final change order, and the final pay request to consider. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This project's complete, and we finally got our final paperwork in place. This was to construct the stormwater basins in Legion Park and behind the homes off of Legion Field Road near Buffalo Ridge Concrete. Project came in under budget, our total amount was $265,902.65. That's roughly $9,000 under contract amount. Staff would recommend that we make the final payment.
Any questions on this?
I move approval.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the change order and noting that the, there is a reduction in the total cost, came in under budget. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Move then to the next agenda item, which is the Legion Field Park Stabilization Project. Once again, a change order to consider, the final change order and the final pay request. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This was the stabilization of the river slope near the shelter in Legion Park off of Legion Road. The riverbank was eroding and threatening a water fill station, a little small yard hydrant, and the shelter itself. This project was identified in the budget for, we had $100,000 in the budget, but that was for two different locations. The one location, we're choosing to wait and see how the pool conversation goes. This location, council elected to go forward with. ANC Excavating got that work done pretty quickly. This one came in pretty much right on budget, we're $36 under budget, but project went well, and we think it looks nice. We would recommend final payment.
Questions?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Don, seconded by John to approve as recommended. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. And we'll move then to the next agenda item, the appointments to various boards and commissions. We, Councilmember Meister, who's the liaison to the Community Services Board, and I, as well as the representative from the school board, did meet and interviewed the applicant, and it will be our recommendation that Lindsey Steffes be appointed to a term that will end February 28, 2024. I'd offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, all, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports, actually, mine have not met since we last met, and Councilmember Dee Kramer will report on the meeting that we had with the Municipal Utilities on our annual partnership agreement. Craig?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Don?
No, we've acted on everything that the Planning Commission did the other night, and public counting, I was unable to attend that meeting.
John?
Okay. Let's start with the MMU one. Other than the announcement we just had earlier, there's a few other things going on that are really some good news. As far as the rates to the city that come from MRES, which is about 75% of our power, there's, they're going to time-of-use billing, which is kind of a progression. This is for the city, this is not to the individual customers yet. They've looked at the numbers and kind of ran the comparisons, and if it was last year, they'd be looking at about a 1% variation, so it's not really going to be a big impact. However, they've also announced that they will be doing a 5% reduction for all of 2022 in the cost of power. So they're giving that to all of their customers. They've had a very good year last year, Missouri River, so our costs are going down by 5%, and that'll show up in the billing through the, the power cost adjustment that we've seen at times. Lately, it's pretty much always been down, and it'll, looks like it'll continue down. They believe their rates are going to be stable enough to last for the next five years, so they should be able to keep them low for the next five years.
Who just fell on the floor?
Not at all. Nobody passed out. That's good. Couple of other things, you know, we've just completed 13 months in a row of 100% reliability, so no customers and within the city have been without power. It's a good deal. And Mayor mentioned, we did have a partnership agreement meeting with the city, myself, Mayor, city administrator, met with MMU, and Annette was there as well, and Jason, and took part in the meeting from the city side. That agreement will be coming probably in, what's it?
The 23rd.
Probably 23rd then, okay. There's a fair amount in it, but really the changes are, I would say, not overly strenuous. There's a few par, portions of the partnership agreement that we've had in the past that are expired, so we no longer have the phone system with MMU, so that's been taken out. And you'll be seeing a copy of it coming very shortly, and as well, the General Manager, David Chalkoff, will be back here to do that presentation, so I think it's going to look very good again for the city. It's a good partnership agreement, and good for the city, so we'll be seeing that coming up. Other committees, EDA did meet. We did have a presentation on the CEO in, let's see, CEO in training, I guess I would say, that is being put on jointly with several schools, and I guess just some other discussions with what's going on, but general, that was most of the meetings, so.
And CEO, that's the acronym for Career Exploration Opportunities, right?
Sure. That works. Okay. Thank you.
It's really helping the young people to see the opportunities for careers in their community and in their region.
Yeah. And definitely an emphasis on entrepreneurship and what is available here in the area. So you get to see not only working with students, with businesses, and really seeing what's going on. So interesting program, and presented by the school and the individual operating it, so if you get a chance, like, say, at Rotary next Thursday, that'd be a good time.
This week?
This week. It'd be a good time to come and take a, take a look at it, so. Other than that, I think that's about it.
Questions for John? Thank you. Russ?
The only committee of mine is Area Transit, and that met, and I was unable to attend, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And Jim? Why did I meet?
We'll move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Jim, let's start, and you're in.
I have nothing but be safe on Sunday night when the trick-or-treaters are out, which includes me.
I almost paid to see.
He's already dressed up for it.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Nothing at this point.
Craig?
Just want to compliment city staff again on the aggressive managing the leaves and pickup on the streets. They look great, and they've been out a lot, and everything I've heard so far, they're pretty appreciative of having the two sweepers again. Now is when we see the real benefit of it again for leaf pickup, so thanks to them, and keep it up.
And Don?
Nothing.
We'll then move on to Staff Reports. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we did receive some preliminary results from the community survey. They did complete that survey about a week and a half ago, and they interviewed 300 residents as they stated in their proposal, and we're awaiting a few more of the results, most importantly, the individual comments. We did have that question, a question in the survey about what do you feel is missing that hasn't been asked about? We think that's going to be really important. And there's really good support for our parks and rec, and there's good support for sales tax, and so I think we'll be pleased with the presentation, which we'll schedule for some future council meeting. I think Kyle or Amy has worked with your schedules. We. schedules. We do wanna present an update on the Aquatic Center at a November 9 work session, and we're trying to schedule that for 4, I believe, or 3:45, one of those two times. And then, also, we are planning for a, one more update on our 2022 levy, now that we know health insurance. We can adjust some numbers and bring back the council some options for the final levy adoption on, at that first meeting in December. And we will likely do that work session on the budget following the council meeting. So, don't need to have a special time schedule. We'll just do it following the regular business agenda The Library Committee that reviews the budget on an annual basis is meeting on November 2 at 8:00 AM with the county to talk about funding. And if we recall, the initial request was not satisfactory to both governing bodies. And then there was some comments about going down to four, or should it be six, and maybe six this year and four next year. So, we're gonna just kind of wade through that, and I do have Michelle looking at some historical documents on it, too. Why do we have this partnership? We may wanna revisit that question and see if there's still merit in continuing. So, there's a lot of history there, and we'll see if it matters as we go forward. And then, we did have staff, and we included Councilmember Craig Schaefer on a discussion with Department of Ag, and just progress made on discussions with Helena and that property. And you may have seen that they did do some excavation of some soils this last week, and due to the rain and expected snowfall, because I think those piles are gonna stay there over winter, I believe. They did put some plastic over to contain that. They are looking at land applying that, and that's just one small part of remediation that needs to be completed. It has been a slow process, and Department of Ag has been trying to keep them moving forward on it, and I know that we have discussed sending a letter to Department of Ag, encouraging them to keep the process moving because the building is of concern as a substandard hazard building and safety. And hopefully, that will gain a little more traction to move along compliance with Department of Ag and Helena. So, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The, just one additional note on the, you referenced the research on the history of the agreement between Lyon County and the city of Marshall. We'll note in that agreement, it does require a year's notice if there's gonna be a change to that agreement.
Yeah, and I'm just starting to look, but there was a referendum in 1942, and
I don't remember that.
To form
You weren't mayor.
You weren't elected yet, huh?
You were just on council then, or?
Yeah.
I don't know when these referendums expire. I mean, I'd have to look back and see when they're no longer valid, and see what it says and things like that, so. But always discussions about library across the state, and I think the difficult part about library funding is the state mandates the maintenance of effort dollars, but they don't dictate how those dollars should be divvied up. And so, the county kind of has some discretion there, and there's always this wrangling between communities in the county on who should get what. And so, it's unfortunate, but it happens, so.
Any other questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you. Just a few items. Councilman Schaefer touched on the street sweepers, and that's an important piece. Another council moved last year to ensure that we have two units now, and I know that the staff is really appreciating that, and they're covering a lot more ground this time of year, especially with the leaves falling. And that's really important as we look at the forecast and see some more rain coming tomorrow, that we're better able to prevent some blockages by getting more sweeping done. Won't eliminate them, but it will help. So, they've been appreciative of that. We'll have some items coming forward soon, I think, for PIT. We'll call a committee meeting there to talk about downtown parking lots. That's kind of something we're focusing on now on the engineering side, so we can be looking for that. We'll probably also wanna talk about potential for no parking in a couple areas on some local streets that we'll present. Probably just wanna touch on the State Aid Overlay Project and Country Club Drive and a couple other things. City staff has had some conversations with our contractor about that work over there, and I think we've come to a mutual agreement that there'll be a few more locations that need to be patched. There'll be some grinding work that'll need to occur to smoothen out a few of the patches. And then, Dunick has agreed in principle to a, we'll call it a penalty, but like a $22,000, give or take, penalty on that portion of the project for some of those surface defects. City staff thinks that's a really fair compromise. It's about a 15% payment against that entire stretch. We'll use, we'll pitch to use those funds to turn around and seal coat the road next year, which is part of our program. So, we think that that's a fair compromise, and will give us, still give us a road that lasts the 15 years that we expect it to. So, we're very appreciative of Dunick coming to the table and having those conversations, and we wanted council to be aware of that, that happened, and that next year when we come to do a seal coat, we would propose to bring that forward to be used on that route. So, we can answer any questions about that if there are any, but that kind of gets us one step closer to closing that project. The other missing piece is, we met with committee and determined that there's a couple pedestrian ramps on Fourth Street that need to get put back in, and our contractor has agreed to do that work, and we're expecting it done yet this year. So, we'll see if that comes to fruition. I think it will. So, we get these things tidied up, and we should be ready to close that project. So, I don't think I've got anything else.
Jason, the additional curb and gutter work in the Westwood Acres area, what's the status of that?
That should be, if not done, about done. I know that we were working very recently, this week even yet, I think, on some of the final areas, but we spent what we've got to spend out there. So, I think we're about wrapped up.
Craig?
Just a comment on that settlement on the pavement, too, and I'm very much in support of, that I think is a good place for seal coat quickly because, just because of the seaming where they had to patch. And I know there's no other way to do that, and I appreciate the work you guys did to get that agreement, and I think that's a good, that's a real good seal coat candidate.
Yeah, yeah. Jesse Dean, Assistant City Engineer, and Dunick staff had a lot of conversations, as well as myself, with them, and took a lot of back and forth, but we're really happy where that showed out, so.
Good.
Very good. Any other questions for Jason? If not, Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just following up on what Sharon said on our discussion with Helena, I thought it was a very good discussion. I think we had the right people in the room from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. Everyone involved expressed their disappointment and discouragement at how long this process has been taking, as Mr. Lozinski has expressed his concern about the length of time. But we have seen some movement on site, but this is not a quick process, and we're all involved in that. And then, secondly, following up with you, Amanda Peterson, we're close to getting the purchase of that property from the Mrs. Mosh completed. Spent considerable time this afternoon dealing with the closing company and the Lyon County Recorder. There's some issues related to the plat. We can't close until that plat is signed. The problem is, the owner is in Arizona, and the plat is in Minnesota. We can either send it down there, she can come here, but a proposal has been for a power of attorney, and that was the question. Can a power of attorney sign on behalf of the owner?
So, this is a plat I need to sign?
Yes.
But I could go down to Arizona.
Take it, pick up a signature.
Do we call Susie at Enterprise and get you a discount?
Yes, a power of attorney, and there is a local power of attorney can sign on behalf of the owner, and then it'll have to go through your signature through the county offices. But once it's of record, then we can close, and I know the school is hoping to close, well, the Realtor representing the school is hoping to close next Monday. There's not that urgency, as far as I'm concerned, but hopefully, that will be occurring shortly.
Very good. On the Department of Ag, I did have a conversation with Tom Peterson, the Minnesota Ag Commissioner, and so, I emphasize that we are very pleased with the professionalism of the MDA staff that has been working on this. The commissioner is fully engaged in the status of this project, so.
Good to know.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing to add on that, too, because I know one of the visuals that keeps us focused on that property is the state of the, of that, kind of the Quonset or the Hipper Building, and there's serious consequence involved in the timing of when that building comes down, because that changes the shape or the makeup of that project significantly. So, we're gonna need to use managed patience as a city, regardless of any potential to buy or not buy that property, just to make sure that we don't create a bigger problem by trying to speed up the clock a little bit. Just, so we're gonna need to be patient on some maintaining, and there was a conversation that we had also with them, asking them to reiterate the importance of securing the building just from people entering and exiting just for, just for ground safety, if nothing else. And then, the structure of the building itself is obviously pretty deteriorated, so it was good.
Any other questions for Dennis? If not, the remaining items, you have the information items, including the building permits, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward this evening at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We are adjourned.